Let's talk about it, this is my staff keeps asking me. To the flag, may I say, and just a reminder for which we stand, one nation of the God, God and the visible and liberty and justice for all.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Westbury leader, Union County local source advertising January 7th, 2016. Notification was sent to the Star of Edge, promptly posted on the municipal public bulletin board, filed with the office of the municipal board, informed the public at time, and placed a call for revisions on the open public meeting. Please everyone turn to your cell phone call and put on mic reading, very appreciated, or call Ms. Arianna.
Mayor Lombardo.
Here.
Councilman Cookrow.
Here.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Matthews.
Here.
Councilman Sarno.
Here.
Ms. Arianna minutes.
Regular workshop in every session of the day, and council held in July 12th, 2016.
Motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Any cases, Ms. Arianna?
New Jersey State League Municipalities, Mayor's Advisory.
Receive and file.
Councilor Grant for ordinance.
Receive and file.
Marion Severin family, thank you, Father.
Receive and file.
Royal Sunita, meaning notice.
Receive and file.
Councilor Grant for ordinance.
Receive and file.
The Leonardo family, purchasing 690 Street and squaring off the property.
Receive and file.
Keith and Barry Love, owners of 690 Street, and regulars based here.
Receive and file. Ordinance is public hearing, ordinance 16 dash 14, as advertised on July 14th, 2016. Ms. Arianna, please read ordinance 16 dash 14, my title on.
And ordinance authorizing purchase of new, additional, or replacement, put-in machinery, featuring a fingerprint machine upgrade, equipment for the use of the police department and self control reassemblies, equipment for the use of the fire department, and programing some thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars in capital and mutual fund finance across their own.
Have we received any correspondence on 16-14?
None, ma'am.
Is anyone present, wish to be heard of, on ordinance 16-14? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Council first pattern for 325 Willow Avenue, and I would like to thank Sarah Councilwoman Tesco for at least using the resources with what we have. And initially, it was supposed to be bonded, but, you know, she looked into it, she worked with the CFO, she came out with an idea, how to actually gain money from within our system to pay for this, and not bond, because it's thirty-six thousand dollars, I don't want bonding, we're gonna have to need forty, forty-five thousand to the taxpayers, so, one taxpayer saying, "Thank you very much, Sarah."
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing, ordinance 16 dash 14?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 16 dash 14?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 16 dash 14, Mayor.
Are there any discussion at this point?
Second.
Seconds. Do you have any discussion at this point? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilman Matthews.
Ms. Arianna, please read 16 dash 15, my title on.
And ordinance, Dr. Regal, the plan for premises known and designated as block 401, blocks 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, located on South Avenue, in the borough of Garwood, County, Union, State of New Jersey, pursuant to the development and housing law.
Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 16 dash 15?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
No.
Councilman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Matthews.
Uh, no.
Councilman Sarno.
No.
Councilman Tesco.
Aye.
Council, Council President, President Zellweger.
Aye.
Since I, Mayor, you've been the president.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Council standing committees reports and other reports. Police, Councilman Sarno.
I need to interject though, are we still continuing this September 13th adoption date?
That's good. I assume I was expecting saying that?
Alright, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Is it tentative until further confirmed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Carry on. Police, Councilman Sarno.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of our departmental firearms training program, Garwood Police conducted annual active shooting training Thursday, July 21st, at my school. This is a cooperative training program where members of the Union County SWAT team were side-by-side with our officers, providing hands-on instruction regarding responding to and handling them, a possible active shooter incident. Unfortunately, we all know too, we all too well, that this type of incident can and does occur, even in the smallest jurisdictions. This training is not just geared toward incidents which could take place at our schools, but also ones that could occur at any building or company within the borough. It is designed to provide consistent tactics that can be used in Garwood, or when assisting other agencies with an incident. Mayor and council, along with the Garwood Board of Ed, were invited to attend and observe, so as to provide them with a little insight into such incidents, and the training that goes into keeping one step ahead of the curve. The ensuing question-and-answer session provided thoughtful discussion. Chief Underhill would like to thank Superintendent Quigley and Board of Ed for use of the building. Also, a special thanks to the Union County SWAT team members, Captain Doug Stover, here in Garwood, along with Union County Sheriff's Officers Lieutenant James Garant and Sergeant Everett Finn, and also Sergeant Mary Schmidt of the Berkeley Heights Police Department for volunteering their time to make sure that Garwood officers receive the best training available. And that's all for my report. Thank you, Councilmen. Any comments on the support?
I do, Mayor, just a quick one. I want to personally thank Chief Underhill for inviting the council and the Board of Education to that. It was definitely very educational, and I know when I first walked in and you see them training, it just, it's all too real, unfortunately, but we know we're in good hands, so, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your comment. Public health, Councilwoman Cookrow.
No report this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Streets and roads, Council President, President Zellweger.
We're too happy about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Department of Health Works completed their regular scheduled activities from July 12th to July 26th. In addition to their regular scheduled activities, they also performed street sweeping along Center Street and at the underpass, removed the debris from the top of all stormwater drain inlets on north and south side of the borough after each storm. Cut up and removed fallen branches along all borough streets and municipalities' properties from the storms on July 18th to the 25th. Elevated and pruned shade trees along the following streets, the 100 block of Willow. Remove all picture shelving and wall hangings at Borough Hall in preparation of the painting project. Prepare the council chambers for court on Monday after the project was completed. Perform major pothole repairs at the following locations: 400 block of Maple Street, intersection of Chestnut Street and North Avenue, Brookside Avenue, and the 500 block of Merrill Avenue as well. Two tons of hop mix asphalt were used for those repairs, and also to begin the weeding sidewalk area along the municipality building fronting Center Street, South Avenue, and along Center Street between north and south. That's all for my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments on the streets and roads?
You know, caution I want to throw out there, is there's a lot of sidewalk projects going on, just be careful. I mean, I know I'm a runner, I'm always jogging around, I just want to throw out some caution to there. Just beware of the sidewalks, they're missing for the time being.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, fire, Councilwoman Cookrow.
No report this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Finance, Councilwoman Tesco.
No report, Mayor.
Buildings and grounds, Councilman Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking with CFO and Recreation Director, Jack Sullivan, we've ascertained that there are sufficient funds in the Sports and Recreation Complex budget to purchase new soccer goals and to pay for needed tree work. As a result, the Buildings and Grounds Committee declines to pay for these expenditures. By way of information, the Building and Ground budget is ninety-seven thousand dollars for 2016, and eighty-five thousand dollars of that amount is consumed by service contracts. Of the twelve thousand dollars remaining, we anticipate spending at least three thousand dollars and probably going north from there, to fix cracks in the exterior walls at Borough Hall, and to replace Moby Sheep Rock in the police conference room resulting from a leak. That's all from my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
First of all, I wanted to say, it was very nice meeting with Councilman Matthews and Councilman Martin. It was, you know, a total unanimous decision. And also, if I, if I may, I know there was the soccer goalposts, I know I didn't want to get too much into weeds with this, but maybe if there are signs, I don't know who's in charge of that, allocated, because it seems that kids were hanging on, and that's what caused the indentation, maybe, I don't know who's in charge, but maybe if signs could be put up, saying, "Hang it your own risk," or, "This is being monitored by closed circuit TV," because I think that was the problem with the Irish, I thought maybe it was the nets, because I went down there and inspected them all, and they all felt sturdy to me except for the slight little bit. So I thought maybe, you know, signs could alleviate that going forward. And also, the soccer field was a disaster. I know Councilman Matthews, when I got there, he was picking up garbage, so I don't know if there was a party over there, or what, otherwise I thought it was very nice meeting between the three of us today, so, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
So, we want to hang signs that say, "No vandalism, no hanging from the net."
It was the posts, I just thought it would be something proactive to do, because as kids are want to do, that's what caused the indent at the top of the post. Not so much the little ones, because there was, there's two different sizes, but I thought that would be good going forward, maybe they would be a little bit, a little bit more courteous to the equipment that Garwood pays for and supplies for them to be able to enjoy that big soccer field.
Yeah, and, you know, part of the reason was that the original posts were probably aluminum composite or something, and, you know, kids hanging on that could bend, it'd be easier than the steel posts that will be replacing them, but it can't hurt to have a couple of signs that say, "No vandalism or whatever," you know, I'd be impressed with that.
Alright, I'll see your thought, I'll get what you can tell the superintendent, see what you can do as far as that. But, just getting back to, I don't know if we want to have a big discussion, but, the new soccer goals, if they're gonna purchase, are they steel, or are they the same ones?
Steel.
Yes, he's gonna do steel, he said they're like going on fourteen years where he has them where he works, and still going strong. He said that, as Councilman Martin said, they were of a lesser material, and that's why I brought up last time, no way should something as expensive be damaged in two years, but if steel lasts for fourteen, you know.
I think better term is PVC pipe? Almost?
No, it, I was knocking it around, it's aluminum, but I mean, you know, but the steel, like I said, I think that could last forever, fourteen years, for Mr. Sullivan, he said, on his, I mean, no need to replace something every two years, when a little bit of extra money could go a long way, and make it a last one.
Okay, thank you. Laws and license, Councilman Martin?
Sir?
Laws and license, you have a report to grant, thank you. Recreation, Councilman Martin?
Yes, for the recreation report, 162 children are registered for this year's summer program with about 100 kids participating on a daily basis, and the positives have been, feedback's been positive from parents. Senior brunch sponsored by Garwood Rec has been scheduled for Sunday, August 14th, from 12:00 to 3:00, it'll be held in the Colombian Club Hall on South Avenue, which is basically the Knights of Columbus Hall. A resident of Garwood donated a foosball table to the rec commission currently located in the complex meeting room. An open discussion ensued regarding a suggested change to the Garwood Sports and Rec Complex application, in particular to the right of host refusal. Discussion was held regarding the potential field ventures for the upcoming season, and the chairman stated a possible soccer rule change may increase the use of the soccer field for youth ages eight to ten.
Thank you. That is all from my, any comments or any questions? Here we go. Garwood senior citizens, there is, I'm Councilwoman Cookrow.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a very full meeting, so I'm making up for the last council meeting, we had nothing to say. I would like to personally thank the Liquid Church of Garwood for supplying at least fifty potted plants to the seniors group. This was an extremely nice gesture and pleasant surprise for everyone, for them reaching out to the community in such a manner. It was a lovely little plant, I was happy to walk right out of there, we brought it home. Everyone welcome new member Ann Evans from the village for joining the group. Upcoming events, there's an ice cream party at the Fire Department on August 11th, from 12 to 3, includes entertainment, call Paulette for further info. This Sunday brunch, Councilman Martin, very nicely brought up, so I can omit that. An afternoon in Italy, Wednesday, September 28th, at the Brownstone, it is sure to be a fun build day with a menu of Italian specialty dishes, music, entertainment, and dancing. Leaves the firehouse at 10, returns at 4. The cost is forty-eight dollars for Garwood residents, fifty dollars for out-of-towners. For further info, please contact Shirley or Jenny, I will provide numbers if anyone is interested. Free cancer screenings on August 6th, from 12 to 4, at the Grand Centurions Bowl in Clark on Madison Hill Road, to pre-register, call the Union County Office of Health Management, I'll provide that number to anybody that's interested. I gave the group the info provided to me by the mayor, you've given me the Olympics for the seniors in Woodbridge on September 9th, 10th, and 11th. I asked for a raise of hands for anyone interested to provide further info, not so much for any hands raised, so, at least I provided the information that you kindly provided to me. I would also like to stress again to any seniors and residents, that please make sure you're diligently answering the doors just when someone knocks. There was a concern brought to the police department about an unknown person, and frankly, was very worrisome, as this same person knocked on several doors, okay? I wanted to say that I was misinformed in my recent statements concerning what is done with leftover food from senior events. The food is given to employees in town, and the rest is discarded for sanitary purposes. The senior director informed me of the procedure, so I was mistaken about that. We had two guest speakers that were set up by the mayor, thank you very much, they were from the Union County Bureau of Mosquito Control. This was an extremely informative presentation, I was surprised to learn that this organization is one of the oldest in the country, and is 104 years old. We also learned that mosquitoes are the biggest cause of deaths for humans, human beings than anything else, times anything, because that's like seven hundred thousand. They brought bottled samples for the group to look at, from the larvae stage to maturity, everyone declined that option. We also learned, aside from all the diseases created by these pestic bugs, and the many deaths as well, that the male is bumped off once mating is complete. I was very happy, a lunch first, as the many informative slides they showed of these buggers was gross. I think the masses got restless with the length of the presentation as it was cutting into bingo time. But it was 100% very well received, as the gentleman really stressed the possible deadly nature of the bugs, and how to protect oneself in taking care of something that's always been considered just a nuisance. And the best way was to have a swatter, of which they brought many ones. Very nice. That's all for my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments?
They all get bumped, they always get bumped off, don't they? Once they sued, they're part of this.
I have a.
Well, they, it was part of the presentation, Mayor.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned the Brownstone, what was that date?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I am of the age.
The Brownstone is.
August 28th?
It is, cut it, September 28th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on, library's mayor's representative, Council President, President Zellweger.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday, library was taken over by a large inflatable planet harem called Starlab. About 26 kids entered the inflatable dome and learned about the planet's star solar systems and galaxies in the night sky. Thursday, 22 children joined us for Lego club, they made incredible creations that can be seen, that can be seen in our display case and on our Facebook page. Today, 14 children made balloon racing cars at the kids craft, and tomorrow, all are welcome to watch Eddie the Eagle take flight at our one-day movie at 2:00 P.M. The library is also pleased to offer five new laptops for public use courtesy of Authente Alliance. The laptops are for Garwood adult residents only, some other restrictions apply, so ask circulation desk for all details. Summer hours for the library started the first week in July, the weekday hours of library will remain unchanged, however, the library will be closed on Saturdays during July 1st, or during July and August. Regularly Saturday hours will begin again on Saturday, September 10th, after later. That's all for my report.
Thank you. Any comments on the library report? School board liaison, Councilman Sarno?
You have a report, Mayor?
Thank you. Celebrate some of the public events, and now there's a, Councilwoman Tesco.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Union County Air Traffic Noise Advisory Board Representative, Councilman Matthews?
No, of course not.
Thank you. Administrative View Committee, Councilwoman Tesco.
No report, Mayor.
Historical Committee, Councilwoman Tesco.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you.
It can tell it's a summer.
Okay, office reports, Ms. Arianna?
Chief of Police, please hand him a monthly report for June 2016. Municipal Court Administrator, LaShawn DeRocque, monthly reports for April, May, and June 2016.
Do I have a motion to accept the offices reports?
So moved, Mayor.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public comment, is anyone in the audience who wishes to invest, the mayor and council, please step to the microphone, state your full name and address, preserve your comments to three minutes. I'll wait till the end, you know, for extra minutes, though.
Extra minutes, okay, I'll speak to that.
Step up, sir.
Can I ask you a question before you begin?
Go ahead.
It's just slightly out of.
Go ahead, what's your name and address, please?
Have you ever gone to a meeting where you didn't get up and talk?
And I've even, I have free holders, I mean, it's amazing, yes, those things are hard.
You have three minutes, you are at now.
Oh, God. Ladies and gentlemen, council, we've got a 325 Willow Avenue, just, I believe in the Buildings and Grounds report, Councilman Matthews mentioned something about saving money in there, I don't know, I didn't hear exactly what it was, but, if so, I wanted to thank you, Councilman Matthews, in saying we didn't have to spend extra money, because it's already in the budget, so, thank you very much on that. The taxpayers are dying from the thousands of loss, so, thank you. Also, signs, you're talking about signs at the rec complex, I brought this up before, so I guess for Councilman, you know, it was about riding bicycles and animals, you know, they let dogs run around in there, so.
See, those signs are up or raised?
Those signs are up or raised?
These are conditional signs that they're asking.
Alright, we're gonna die from so many signs, too, so that's pretty sad, but.
Sign pollution is real.
Also, back to the redevelopment plan, I'd like to at least thank Attorney Renaud for his explanation, it actually did leave a couple of questions still outstanding, and I was just wondering, can the council, I guess the only choice they have is voting yes or no, what happens if they have any concerns, how could that be addressed? Can you actually tweak the plan? You know, because the plan, once it goes in place, you know, you can't go back, if there's issues, so, you know, and moving on, I'd probably write a letter with some additional proposals and ideas that I'm sure, so I guess we could explain that. And just one last question, I guess we could be Attorney Renaud also again, on the agenda is 16 dash 242, the Division of ABC is granting a special ruling, I'm just wondering, what does that mean, special ruling? So, that's it, thank you very much.
I'll answer, please, but it's a pocket license, that became a pocket license so many years ago, and they will only allow it to stay a pocket license for a certain amount of time, that's when they can automatically renew, just through me and the governing body, that time is passed on this license, and they have to go for, go to the Attorney General to get a special ruling for, to allow the mayor and council to renew that license. They got that special ruling for two years, so, for two years, mayor and council consider renewing that license, after that time is up, they have to go back and get another special ruling.
Moving forward, always has to be a special ruling?
Because it's a pocket license, the state of New Jersey does not like liquor licenses that are in people's pockets, they want me to use them, so this is how they keep on top of them. They'll only let it be a pocket license for a certain period of time, and then they'll no longer issue special rulings. You have to make cause, you have to write and tell them why you're not using the license, and they decide whether or not they're going to allow you to continue to keep it in the pocket.
Okay, so, Director of ABC?
Attorney General.
The agent?
Attorney General, yeah.
It's the Department of Public Safety, which the Attorney General is the head, but yes, it's the Division of Alcohol Recovery and Control in the Department of Public Safety. Just, can you address that for us? Well, let's see. First of all, a plan can be amended, again, by ordinance, you can always amend the plan. What else? Could you make changes in the plan? No, you'd have to, I mean, if you, if there were changes that were wanted in the plan, they'd have to go back, at this point, it's the planning board's plan, so they'd have to go back to the planning board. I don't remember the question, so, I think that was it. So, yes, you can amend the plan. Understand, a redevelopment plan, any redevelopment plan, which is adopted by ordinance, is essentially a zoning ordinance, so in other words, you're making a new zoning ordinance for this particular area, that's what it is, and just like any zoning ordinance, it can be amended.
I guess I just wanted to maybe add to what Mr. Renaud said, or Mr. Renaud can clarify what I'm about to say, but, in response to Mr. Patterson's earlier questions, that he said before he felt they were unanswered, in terms of the plan, it's really just setting general guidelines for that piece of property, it's not the site plan, which would come later before the planning board, or a potential agreement with the redeveloper, where you're working out financials and studies and things like that, so, I think that is important to clarify, and Mr. Renaud, feel free to clarify my clarification, but, just a point out for the public.
Yes, that's correct, in other words, you're not approving of the developments, just, again, as I said, it's like a zoning ordinance, so it's approving of the ordinance that sets the framework. The next step really is for there to be a redevelopment, to designate a redeveloper, and then have a redevelopment agreement, and then the designated redeveloper applies for, well, first they have to develop a plan in a lot more detail than anyone has seen so far, and then the, the plan in form for, and submission for site plan approval, then we go to the planning board for review, and approval, modification, rejection, whatever.
I, Mayor, when do, where in that process do we implement the redevelopment attorney, to be able to guide us along, because obviously, as Councilwoman just said, modifications can be made, so, the modifications are made by council, and then it goes to the planning board, and then they shuffle it around and do whatever, so when would the attorney kind of play?
I would anticipate, I would anticipate that will be, I don't know, when are we getting, what was our, our date?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so we should be getting proposals tomorrow, so it's gonna be as long as it takes you to review and determine what you want to do, and then act.
As far as the attorney goes, the deadline is tomorrow?
I'm accepting proposals, you don't see, okay, Councilman.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment, if not, we'll move on. We'll move on to unfinished business, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilman Tesco.
Aye.
Council President, President Zellweger.
Aye.
Do we have some resolutions that are related to the consent agenda? Resolution 16 dash 245?
I have a motion, please.
She has to read first.
No, I don't have to read these, they're on, I have two that are not on here that I have to read, but they're on here, I don't have to read them.
I have a motion, can I discuss this?
You have a motion in a second, so, discuss it.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 16 dash 245.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now you have to ask.
Now we have discussion, if I may, Mr. Councilman Sarno first, this has been discussed in the Finance Committee, it's been discussed in the Budget Process, and also, too, we received a detailed report from the Administration Office, so, I'll have a second, thank you.
Mayor, I feel bad for cutting off Councilman Sarno, but, as Finance Chair, if I could just give a little history to this, if you don't mind, Councilman.
Mayor, I feel bad for cutting off Councilman Sarno, but as Finance Chair, if I could just give a little history to this, if you don't mind, Councilman. Thanks, just to add to what the mayor said. I have a few more words than he does sometimes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, so we did meet last week as a Finance Committee to discuss this, and it is an item, as the mayor mentioned, that has come before our committee and also the council as a whole, since the retirement of our last tax collector, who was full-time in November. During budget meetings, it was explained by the Administration that a part-time tax clerk could not remain in the capacity permanently in order to effectively run our finance department, and at the time, they requested of us as a council either two part-time clerks or one full-time clerk. Either option was funded in this year's budget. Due to limitations on office space, the Administration has now requested the position be made full-time. As outlined in the memo that everyone appeared received on Friday in our council mail, the position's responsibilities will not be limited to tax collection, but will encompass all areas of the finance department, which will allow for segregation of duties and cross-training on many of the duties within the finance department. This arrangement improves the efficiency of our borough finance department through the cross-training and comes at a cost of $3,000 less than last year with a full-time tax collector whose duties were limited to tax collection, and so, um, I just wanted to give that little bit of history to it and add some numbers to the discussion, and thank you, Councilman Sarno, for letting me go first.
The Finance Committee voted 2-1 on this. I was not in favor of it, because you go back to January, okay, you look at the CFO, she was given, she was voted to have a raise of $17,000. Um, at the time, it was said that that would save the borough about $33,000. Well, that savings is now really almost a couple grand, if nothing at all. Um, if we really wanted to talk about the CFO's performance and the corresponding raise to go along with it, it shouldn't have discussed in public as such.
It's not about CFO, it's about tax collection.
I haven't heard anything yet, I'm listening.
Instead, we have a false sense of savings that was done in January, okay, and six months later, after this raise was approved, we have a false narrative of that, and the real story comes out that we really need a full-time employee, okay? This was sold in January as something different, and now, here we are, six months later, saying, oh, this is, this is the only thing we can do. I am not in favor of this. I knew back then that a full-time employee would come, that was my, why I voted no at that point in time, and the savings really, there is no savings, okay? Back in January, that was, that is done. That's all I have to say.
I do have something in response to that, but, if the Councilwoman would like to...
Uh, yeah, just a few things. Um, I do remember when this whole thing was going on in January, and the two part-timers as opposed to a full-time. Obviously, this always comes into health benefits, which is always a big concern, so that's why I thought that part-time, the two part-timers would be more cost-effective. Um, as far as this goes, is there any way, is this revenue neutral? If you substitute one full-time person in place of those two part-timers, what is gonna happen with the benefits? Because that's a big concern, and, and, like I said, that was the reason we went for the two part-timers, correct me if I'm wrong. Is that why we went for that in January?
Well, we didn't really go for it in the sense that, I agree, and we had a consensus as a council, and at the time, the Administration said, either way, we'd work for them. Two part-timers as clerks in that finance office, or one full-time, um, in that capacity would suffice, but, um, really, we did not buy a resolution or anything, hire two full-timers. What we've been going by is a tax collector with a certificate at a cost of $17,000 a year for that salary, and then also a part-time tax clerk. Whether we have two part-time tax clerks or a full-time, um, and I don't have the, the name, the exact titles here, uh, an accounting and payroll clerk is basically, either way, it was funded in the budget. There's not much difference because of, um, you either have a full-timer at the salary of $35,000 plus benefits, or you have two, two part-timers who have to make a certain amount anyway, so, um, either way, it was budgeted, the number is really unimportant there, but I get the number of $3,000 less than last year, including the health benefits. I just want to point that out.
Yeah, because, like I said, I mean, but the benefits are a huge concern, right? You know, I'm just trying to make sure I get this absorbed correctly. Like I said, if, if a full-timer is what's needed for what the borough needs, then you're gonna have to supply benefits, okay? So, can there anything be done to be able to accommodate what the borough needs as far as a full-time person in lieu of the two part-timers and make it cost-neutral, revenue-neutral?
It's $3,000 less than what we pay you for...
Going forward, going forward for how...
Right now it is.
Right now.
Right now, at this point in time, that doesn't mean down the road, so I agree with you.
What do you mean by down the road?
What, a year from now, two years from now. That all changes, with the cost of help.
Well, with two, with two part-timers, we never have to consider health benefits, that's why I'm just...
Well, with two part-timers, you have to consider that you have to fund a lot of money for me to restructure my entire office and have a desk, because there's no place to put another person, and we're not asking for more. This is what we had. Uh, you're gonna save money on my staff. I don't see you trying to save money on any other department or any other person. Uh, I, I mean, I've expressed to some of you, I've invited you to call me, come talk to me, but you didn't. I've asked, the people will speak to me about this. Eileen, you're one of them, you have, you have been in my office, I've showed you the problems, you've seen them firsthand. We have no place to put another person. We would go with the two part-timers, but that's why we haven't done it yet. We're racking our brains. Chief Underla has been invited in to, toward the area and sees our dilemma to make a suggestion or try to help us. He's very aware of the problem. Nobody here is coming to see what I want to show you or talk to me, but you assume that we don't need this. You're absolutely wrong. Uh, we need this person to be full-time, it's, of course, you absolutely know money, because there was a change in health benefits for a different employee that reduced their healthcare, so it's a wash, you don't have to ever appropriate any more money, we're not asking you to appropriate it anymore. It's like you're giving us a present or something. It's what we need to function, to run the office, to staff it, to be proper, to take care of the residents. You're not listening to your administrator, your CFO, and I would say the chief also agrees with me, if he would stand up and say so, that he also knows that we need this staffed person. So, you have the three top people telling you this, that savings of $3,000 from the employee left last year, and you're still resisting it. I, I really question that.
No, excuse...
I really do.
No, Mrs. Erin...
It's very upsetting.
I'm, I'm trying, Miss, Miss, I'm just trying to be able to have all of us work together to a common goal of, you know, satisfying this, you know?
But that's not what's happening. It's like, it's coming from my office, so we need to know. I'm telling you that...
No.
We had a full-time tax collector. She was not even tenured because she just got her certification. She was limited. We patiently waited for that retirement so that we could progress into the future in our office and work. We're on the cuff of that, except for you're, you're not listening to us, and you're getting in our way. We got this employee, he's fantastic, his mother and his grandmother are tax collectors elsewhere, has experience in the system. That's why we managed, because he has a little bit of experience. If we didn't have them, we would not be managing. Uh, we need to give him more work, he's very capable, but he needs more hours in the office. If you didn't have Sandy as your tax collector, um, and you had a full-time tax collector, you would pay him a minimum of $60,000 a year, and they would only do tax collection, and they would tell me that's all they're doing, because that's what that certification gives you. If you don't believe me, go call the municipalities and ask how much tax collectors get paid. Ask them. Uh, tax collector has to be certified. Mr. Clerk could be in school, CFO could be in school, an assessor could be in school, you can appoint them active, not tax collector. You have to have a certified tax collector, by law. You cannot not have one. If this one walks out, you have to replace them immediately, or put in one of those temporary people at $100 an hour, $1,000 to walk in the door, and they'll only come for four hours and do tax collection, pay somebody $400 a day, just because you won't listen to your administration begging you to do what the office needs to accomplish our daily tasks and serve the public. It's the most busiest office in the municipality, it's overburdened, and no one in my office complains, but everybody there does the job of much more than one person. We're asking you at no expense, the taxpayers, to give us what we need. Everybody else gets what they need, why does my office get criticized? It's not fair, and it's wrong. This employee, this position needs to be full-time, or you need to give me money to restructure my office. I gotta move files, walls, and things, and add another spot for someone. I gotta put a computer in, I gotta run a line, I gotta do all kinds of things. So, that's what you want, that's what we're doing.
And I respect that, that's why I'm trying to see if something can be worked out. If you're saying it is revenue-neutral, the benefit...
Less.
It's less, and the benefits as far as the other person that they're no longer receiving health benefits, that is...
Where was all this in January? That's the only point I think...
Didn't have, that part didn't happen in January. Did anybody read Sandy's memo? Did anybody read the memo?
Mayor, can the elected officials would like to comment on this, or...
No, no, there's Councilman, I'm sorry. I'm not finished. Did anybody read the CFO's memo?
That's the first thing I mentioned.
Did, did everyone read it?
I'm assuming they all did.
Okay, so everybody saw there was a savings in healthcare in there? So then, why are we asking that question?
Well, I'm trying to reiterate, reiterate, so everybody understands what we're talking about here. I'm trying to be able to give the borough what it needs and still have everybody understand that it's revenue-neutral, and we don't have to worry about benefits going down the line, then I, I don't, I don't, I don't see, I don't see a problem then, except that if, why wasn't it done in January? That's all I'm asking.
Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to, before we get too far into it, um, I remember the budget being specifically asking the CFO if two, uh, part-time, um, uh, people would be sufficient, or does it have to be one, uh, full-time? She specifically said that meaning two part-time would be sufficient, um, and I was listening to her. Uh, secondly, um, yeah, that, you know, there's, there's a pattern here, Mayor, of, there's a certain fraction on this government body that sells something to the public under one set of savings, and then a few months later, there's the, there's the kind of sota voce, uh, diminution of that savings with less than fair. If I remind you, Mayor, um, you were part of this with the Administrative Review Committee, you distributed a letter to the borough saying how much we would save if we fired Fred, and then less than a year later...
Yeah, but, Mayor, I'm not, I'm not gonna excuse you. I'm not gonna, Mayor, I'm not out of order. You don't like hearing what I have to say? I'm sorry. All right, Mayor, you don't like what I have to say? You're not a tyrant. I don't know what you think, all right? Let me finish what I'm saying, and please stop being rude, all right? And then, a year later, we participated in hiring another person, and there was no, I asked you to redistribute a letter correcting your original letter, which is false. The same thing happened in January. False statements were made to the public, and Councilman Sarno, unfortunately, was very prophetic in this. He knew this was coming down the line, and his cynicism has been validated, unfortunately. I wish you were wrong, and that's why I'm voting against this. There's plenty of room in this building. There's a mayor's office here, Mayor. Did they, did they use your office?
How can that doesn't help the public if they're...
How, how, how often did you use that office? How often did you use the office? Are you willing to give it up? Also, the judge is in there. Are you, are you... Why not? Are you willing to give it up? No. You're not willing, okay, there you go. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, for, uh, answering. At this point, I...
Mayor, I am sorry, but I do want to state for the record that, um, before the new council people were even sworn in this January, we discussed this matter in executive session, and I think because it's no longer something that's in executive session, it's been resolved, and it's come out in public, I can at least say this, that we all knew very early on that a tax collector who was also doing the job of CFO, um, could not be the tax collector for $17,000 without any help, and that a part-time clerk would not satisfy that office forever. We did know that, so I just want to point that out for the record. And one other benefit I just want to point out as well, uh, to Councilman Kukero's questions about health benefits, um, and I know health benefits come up when you hire full-time, but at the same point, they are entitled to that, so, uh, please take into consideration as well, health benefits versus, um, a statutory raise for a tax collector making $55,000 as a salary compared to one making $17,000 for a salary, so that's just another little factor to consider. Thank you.
I think another factor is...
I'm, I'm sorry, before we go any farther, just, it hasn't been too bad, but we have to do a couple of things. One, don't discuss the performance of any particular employee, and, and, um, I guess that's my main caution. The executive sessions are not for generally the kind of discussion that you're having about whether a position should be created or whether, whether an employee is needed. That's fine for open session. Avoid comments about the performance of, uh, existing employees. I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't mean to, I just wanted to get that out of all the other...
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you. Uh, I think what we need to do here is have a certain balance, and the balance is that we have to make sure we're listening to the people who are closest to the work. Sandy Ryan's very close to the work, Tina is very close to the work, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this, they're both wonderful, dedicated employees, and do a great job. I believe what they're saying is true, because they're closest to the work, and we don't pay enough attention to employees who get us what we need to know in terms of what about what the work requires. That's why I'm voting yes.
So, there's just one thought of comment, if I may, Mayor. Um, the thing that we all bring our hands about is that we have no control over healthcare and pension benefits, and the people who will vote yes for this tonight are minting more employees who will be entitled to those healthcare and pension benefits. So, next time a councilperson says to you, or a mayor says to you, oh, there's nothing we can do about this, say, hey, didn't you just hire somebody else on the DPW and hire somebody else on the office? Well, that's doing something about, that's exacerbating the problem. Thank you.
Can I have one more thing?
Last thing, then, roll call.
Um, can I address Councilman Sarno? Am I allowed to do that, Councilman?
Please, yes.
Is there, um, any negative, like I said, I understand the plight of both sides, believe me, I, you know, health benefits and stuff like that. Will there be any negative going forward if we hire this one full-time person with the benefits intact as far as here tonight? Do you see that? I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm all in favor of giving what the borough needs. I understand what's going on. I had a complete horror of the disaster that's back there, but I also am very, very ambivalent about health benefits. I mean, it is an escalating cost to all of us and the taxpayers. Is there any way that this can be done neutrally that you feel, because I trust your judgment financially, that we can move forward on advancing this with a full-time person? Um, and, and, and getting rid of the two part-timers. I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
I know there's one part-timer, just to clarify.
Okay. Hon- honestly...
Yeah, there, how was it? It was a brought-up in the Finance Committee, is that right? And I offer a suggestion, we will shut down.
Well, that's the face, you did mention the mayor's office.
And I also mentioned the salary exchange.
Okay.
What was that, Councils, elaborate on?
Okay, what I was suggesting is giving that, and what I wanted to do is make this guy whole-time when he passes the exam, becomes a certified tax collector, okay? Then, when that point in time comes, you reduce the salary of our tax collector. It's a trade-off. That's the only way you can vote on it.
That's a great, that's a fabulous idea.
Yeah. So, I think if the Councilman, if you can, we need someone's salary, tax collector.
Yeah, I can explain that. You can't reduce the tax collector's salary.
Can we remove it then, entirely?
Before your appointment.
Then, then explain why January, you vote on it.
Well, in January, the council voted 4-2 for the tax collector. I, I know you voted no.
I did.
It was voted 4-2 to have a tax collector.
I voted yes to reduce the salary of that one.
I think I voted on that.
She did. She voted.
Yes, I did.
I believe you both did.
I didn't know. I'll check my record.
No, it's 10 minutes, I believe you voted yes.
Because I was, I was very concerned about the health benefits. I mean, like I said, I mean, we're all, we're all up here doing the same thing for the people out there. Is there any way this can be rectified? Either, I don't know if there's, can there be further discussion about it? Can there be a consensus about anything else that can be done so that we don't come to a meeting of the minds?
Do you want a suggestion on what else could be done?
Well, I thought that was a great, but I guess it's not a suggestion.
You can't put my staff back here in, in the corner, where they...
I never even knew there was a roof back there.
The public comes over there, so that's out of the question. My staff has to be accessible to the public.
Isn't that, what do you do with the judge? Does the judge...
Problem, Judge Harley.
I think at this time, I think we're gonna call Sariella. I think at this point, we're gonna call a roll call.
I'm, I'm, I'm undecided about this, so that's the whole thing, so...
Uh, Councilwoman Kukero, if I may, and I know this discussion's gone a long time, but the matters that we discuss are important up here. Um, quite honestly, I almost really don't understand why this issue has become such an issue and such a football when the office was staffed at a certain level last year with a tax collector at $55,000 a year plus benefits. This year, we're looking at having our CFO be the tax collector as well, which was voted, like I said, 4-2 in January, and to have... like I said, 4-2 in January, and to have an accounting payroll clerk, so they're handling not just tax collection, but even more for $3,000 less. It's a, it, quite honestly, it's, it's just, it makes sense and it's good, so now that you've, I don't want to get too much into the employee conversation, but when you have one employee leave and then you're able to still save money in that office and make it more efficient, I feel that's net positive, so that's why I am voting for this. And I don't, to back up what Ms. Sarriella said, I feel as though we do not nitpick other offices in the same way. If a police officer leaves and we hire one at a step above probation, no one really questions it, no one has, we don't have 30-minute discussions about that, yet we did when it came to this office here tonight. So, again, I fully support the Police Department and their staffing and how they've done it, so Chief, please don't take that the wrong way, but I just want to be equitable when it comes to the departments.
Well, I wasn't here last year, so I have no idea what was going on.
That actually happened this year with the Police Department. It's okay, it's a lot.
Mayor, can I quickly, wait, please, Chief, just a quick comment, okay? It's nothing to do with it got a new employee full-time, has to do with the building. We're quickly outrobing this building. Storage for employees for this court and this council, you have to move meetings at the school, if we can't accommodate here, I personally remodeled my own department twice in the last couple of years. So, you're running out of room, and there are sensitive things in the mayor's office and the judge, which the judge shares. Not a place in your office to do whatever you have to do out here, it's going to cost some money. There's something to think about around Berlin West Base.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, roll, what was Sarriella?
Councilwoman Kukero.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews.
No.
Councilwoman Sarno.
No.
Councilwoman Desco.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who voted yes, I appreciate it. My staff, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Resolution number 16246?
I don't believe it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution 16246? So moved. Do you have a second, second? Roll call, please, Sarriella.
Councilwoman Kukero.
I'm not sure why we're canceling it, maybe.
We have no business.
No, and, and we first talked about it, Sarriella and I, I just presumed that we're going to have a lovely meeting that month, so that's basically it.
You think there'll be nothing to discuss, because I think we should still have two.
Well, it's two of them, so...
All right, okay, all right.
And when is we...
Okay, no, I don't want to cancel it.
So, you voted no to this resolution?
Correct.
Councilwoman Martin?
We, it's not confirmed, we've got nothing.
Right, no.
Okay.
Councilwoman Matthews?
I'm voting no. I told Mr. Locke to think, make sure he had something at the next meeting.
Councilwoman Sarno?
I feel the same way.
Councilwoman Sarno?
No.
Councilwoman Desco?
You know what I was meaning, so, no.
Councilwoman President Petrazelli?
Yes.
Your presentation failed. Or no. The meeting will take place on August 9th.
Well, just clarification for Mr. Locke's part of the meeting.
There're no, there'll be nothing for Mr. Locke on the August 9th meeting, it's not, it won't happen that fast, so. He has to make applications with the best permit, has to be denied, and then he would be notified, and then he would talk about it, and then I would prepare resolution, I suspect that will happen soon, but we'll see. I'll see you tomorrow.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to, there's a fair tax funding resolution in part, it's just, can I, if I can't do it now, can I add that to the August 9th meetings?
Hold on a second here, because I have two resolutions that are not on the consent agenda. One, I sent you yesterday morning concerning fire department equipment, may I read that resolution? Resolution 16247, whereas a proposal has been received in New Jersey Department for the purchase of 12 Scott carbon-wrapped cylinder less valve accessories and installation according to the code of 10,000 cents and dollars and cents. Whereas the clerk of the Borough Department received an order concerning fire contract rights. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Council, the Borough authorized the purchase of the act mentioned 12 Scott carbon-wrapped cylinder less valve accessories and installation according to the code of 10,000 cents and dollars and cents. And if the clerk is authorized to enter such order on behalf of this Borough and sign consent documents that may require consummation of this act. Being further resolved that the award is supposed to be the third treasure of executing the code of certification.
Do you have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved, Mayor.
Do you have a second, second? Roll call, please, Sarriella.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilwoman Desco.
Aye.
Councilwoman President Petrazelli.
Aye.
And onto your resolution, I sent you an email that I had this resolution prepared and ready to go, if you do it now or wait.
I'd like to do it now.
Can you read the resolution, Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 16248, supporting fairness, formula, equal school funding and properly tax relief, whereas the Constitution of the State of New Jersey provides for the maintenance and support of a federal and efficient system of free public schools for the instruction of all the children in the state between the ages of five and 18 years, and, whereas New Jersey schools are funded through a combination of state, federal, and local dollars, and whereas state aid is currently allocated through the school districts using weighted formula rather than equal school funding, and, whereas Governor Christie has stated a funding formula that puts higher value on one child over another is morally wrong and is economically destructive. Every child has potential, every child has hope. No child's dreams are less worthy than another child's. No child deserves less funding from the state's taxpayers, and, whereas the governing body has pledged to support the Governor Christie's fairness formula, which ensures that all students have equal funding to be successful and provide properly tax savings to all residents. Now therefore, it is resolved by the governing body of the Borough Department in the State of New Jersey. That hereby concurs with and supports the Governor's initiative to amend the Constitution of the State of New Jersey to require that state funding to school districts other than special education funding be an equal for people basis, and, be it further resolved that probably this resolution be voted to the Jersey Governor, Christopher Christie, Senate President Stephen Sweeney, Assembly Speaker Bino, something, and our State Senator, two representatives in the General Assembly, unique crime clerk, and the New Jersey District Commissioner, Mrs. Powell.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.